One moment, please. Brianna is hosting you in that meeting there tonight. She's gonna push the button.
Nope, another one.
Another one.
That's very good.
Oh, wait. Yeah, it's okay.
All right, let's proceed with public comment.
Ms. Brinelli, it doesn't look like you have any hands raised virtually.
I have one.
Oh, oh, look at that.
Sorry. I'm like double muted here, you know, it's like, whatever. Great. Sorry I'm not there in person, but our car is at the shop and McBriens wasn't that fast about it. So my name is Patricia Waite, 695 Punchy Way. I do not have children in school, but I'm an interested taxpayer. First, I really like to commend Superintendent Burkhart and everybody involved on the approach used for the development of the strategic plan. It really allowed all of us to contribute our ideas and comments, so thank you very much. As a businessperson in technology who understands and has been responsible for the hiring of personnel, as well as a nonprofit director, I'm just concerned at the lack of focus on academic achievement within the strategy and its objectives. Within the first objective, rightfully it is mentioned in relation to special education, but really not elsewhere. As you well know, Situate is academically performing rather low within our peer group of the South Shore schools. One would expect, given that situation, that the strategy would include objectives to improve that performance within the five-year timeframe covered by the strategy. We would hope this committee would insist on that. In the technology world, what we're seeing is that hiring companies are seeking talent from schools like Georgia Tech, rather than from Stanford and similar universities that have focused less on academics and were once much more prestigious. That's because firms are no longer confident that a Stanford graduate would possess the skills required to perform well at their company. Of course, SPS is not a university and it shouldn't be. And not all graduates will or should attend one. My point is only that we need our students to be qualified to pursue their dreams and aspirations and are responsible for that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. For your comment, I would encourage you to reach out to myself or Superintendent Burkett through email for additional information on our strategic plan. Okay, I do not see any other hands. So we will move forward, new business. Out-of-country field trip for Model UN. Do we need a mic?
Just for the people.
He used to allow this out there.
All right.
Get a turn on.
Hello, happy summer. I am Heather Willinger, for those that don't know me.
I'm Kelly Travers, I'm also a history teacher at high school.
And so we're here today for our annual visit about Model UN trips for next year. As you know, this year we went on three Model UN trips. One to New York, one to Boston, and one to DC. Our students did exceptionally well in those conferences and won a lot of awards. And so we're hoping this year that we're going to push them forward a little bit more. We were sort of on the verge of that kind of coming into the pandemic, and then the pandemic set everything sort of back. So it's really exciting to get that sort of like push again academically for those students in these conferences. So this year, we're looking to attend two conferences that we've been to in the past, but have been really, really great, high-level conferences that will really challenge our students. So the first is the Secondary Schools UN Symposium at Montreal. That's being held at McGill University. We've gone up there three other times, I think, and it's just a fantastic conference. Students will be going from the 8th of November and will be there until the 12th. Our plan is to do what we've done in the past, which is to take the take a coach bus up, although I looked at flights today just out of curiosity because they had sent something out from the conference saying if you fly Air Canada, you get 10% off. So that might be worth checking out too, because that would be a much shorter trip. But we will, we're planning on doing that. The conference is being held at the hotel. And it's just a really well-run conference. And for those, I know we have new school committee members. And so just so that you know, for Model UN, students represent countries or people and try to deal with global issues. And that they're there throughout the whole weekend. They're there really from 9:00 AM until about 10:00 or 11:00 PM at night with like breaks for dinner and things like that, but they are going and debating, discussing, negotiating. And it's a really fantastic experience. And so we're planning to take about 30 students this year. We've had, we had about 25 to 30 for New York and the same to DC. And then I think we had 50.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight for Boston, which was a lot, but it was great to give an opportunity to students that hadn't been able to do it before. So this trip is approximately $800 for five days and four nights. They do offer financial aid and scholarships through this conference. So that's definitely something that we're going to look into. But we're also doing some fundraising activities this summer to offset the cost of this trip. And Kelly, I don't know if you want to talk about some of those.
Yeah, so we're gonna hopefully start this Wednesday with the 77 flag football that Situate High hosts. Right now, no boosters or anything use that. So we put in a fundraising approval to sell theater reads and Cheez-It, stuff like that, as kids are playing. And we're planning on using a rotating schedule, so not just our officers, but other members of the club can come. And it's good community building too, to encourage some of the younger students to hang out with our upperclassmen who are very behind the fundraising, which is awesome. We also are setting up car wash for late August, early September. Water ban pending, but that's the plan. And then we do Heritage Days and we'll do our homecoming. Football night was a really good fundraiser for us last year, so.
And this year, actually, too, we're gonna try something new, working with Mulaney's Fish down in the harbor. One of our officers, Tessa Norton, her father owns Mulaney's and is gonna help us do a lobster roll day for teachers as we come back to school. So hoping to do a, we'll include everybody.
Teachers.
Teachers and central office and school committee if they'd like to come too. So we're hoping that that's a good honey maker as well for our students. So that's our first conference. And I don't know if you want us to talk a little bit more, if you have questions about this one, or we could go on to the second one and then talk about both.
So were you serious about like if you get a better deal with flights?
Absolutely. Yeah, so if we can do that, whatever's gonna be the cheapest for the students, we try to do that within reason. You know, we don't like to really skimp too much on the hotel and things like that because we want it to be in a safe place and we want it to be, this particular one is at the conference location, so we'll want to be there. The only thing that will be nice about the flights as opposed to the buses, we would have to pay for a bus driver to stay with us for all that whole time. And we have to house them. We don't have to feed him, but we need to house him in the hotel or in a similar hotel and pay for his time. So it does get costly to take the buses up, but we'll see how that pans out.
So I had two quick questions. One is you said so that our students could do high-level UN. So I'd love, as someone who didn't do Model UN, I'd love to hear more about that. The other question is around the number. Is the number a function of this is how many students are interested? Are you turning students away? And if so, how are we making sure that folks who want to do it have the access to do it?
Sure, I'll take the first one. Okay, so in terms of the conferences, there are sort of like the gold standard conferences. So there are like actual Model UN travel teams and club teams that people can pay to be on. And they typically walk away with the big awards at the end. But our students have competed really well with them. And so we were looking at what conferences they go to to try to really push them. So there's like 10 or 15 sort of like core conferences that those groups go to. And so we were trying to sort of match some of the things that they've done. But they're also, it's also dependent on how big it is, the opportunity for crisis committees. So some of them do like crisis committees where they're responding in the moment to developments. Sometimes they're, sometimes one group is making the developments for another group and they're interacting, and so they have to respond to each other. So it's some of those opportunities that are a little bit more engaging that make it like a higher level conference than others. But we, you know, also like to try to do the beginner conferences as well because we do have a lot of new people and we do want to kind of keep building the ranks. So we will look to do some one-day conferences. The state, the UNAGB, the United Nations Association of Greater Boston, does one at the State House in the fall. There are some through BC. They're all over the place. So we'll try to do some of those, but I don't know if you want to talk about how.
Yeah, so our enrollment, especially last year, was pretty big. We ended up holding a tryout, is what we called it. It was more so to help us determine the level of help students would need. So we meet every Thursday. And we have four senior officers called head dells, two work with the upperclassmen, so those with advanced skills, and then two work with the underclassmen, who we had a lot of last year, which is why Boston was so big. And it was a really good opportunity to, to bring more new students to that one who maybe weren't ready for five days away from home or who weren't ready to compete at the level of kids who take this as a class every day. So I would say we have about 100 members in the club. And last year, every student was able to go to at least one conference, most one to two, which was awesome.
And I think it is challenging. Last year, like I said, we did three, and that was a lot. It's more than we've typically done. And I really wanted to do that for the seniors last year because it was their freshman year that was the COVID year. And so they had planned some trips and they lost out a couple of years of trips that they could really go places.
They did the virtual ones, they're very good sports.
Yeah, and they were not fun. But they, but, so I tried to squeeze in a third trip, and it was a lot of preparation and just a lot of work for the officers, for us.
Chaperones.
Chaperones was difficult to get at times. So we're gonna go back to two, but we still have that push from the kids to really do two bigger ones that.
We'll have a lot of experience.
Yeah.
Next year, which I think will be exciting, but also really good because they're encouraging friends to join, we're upperclassmen and others who they know were coming in as freshmen, which will be able to.
Penny Williams. So did you, do you want to just catch up? Yeah, my. Okay, so the second one is a conference that we've been to before out in California. It was, I don't know if it was 2018, 2017, I can't remember when we went out there. But this is actually, the very first Model UN conference was held at UC Berkeley, like in 1952. So this is the oldest United Nations conference in the world, I believe, which is really kind of fun and exciting for them. This conference, we would fly, obviously, we'd go into San Francisco. We'd take a day to sort of like see San Francisco as well, because if you're gonna fly and spend the money to go out there, otherwise you're sitting in the, you know, hotel and that's not, you know, quite San Francisco. So we'll take them around and see San Francisco on the first day. The conference itself runs for three days. We have a day built in at the end. It's March 6th through the 11th. We would prefer to come back on the 10th, but depending on flights, last time we had to take a red eye and get in. So we put it as the 11th, but we can update that for sure because they would be missing Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then a Monday of school. But again, we would prefer to do the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday like we typically do, but it will just be dependent on the flights because the prices were way higher to not fly a red eye back again. So that was our, that was why we ended up extending it to the 11th, which is not typically what we would do.
And they really liked going to award ceremonies. We did not go to the DC ones because the flights were cheaper to leave early Sunday morning.
They were upset.
And we were in the airport and they had their phones out watching their names.
Virtually.
Virtually on the screen. It was adorable, but we also had to get to bed.
So we wanted, we wanted to make sure that they got a chance to be there and finish the conference there. But it's the same, same thing. The cost for this one is about $1,200. But again, I think we can probably get the price down. Not only by, we sort of did the higher end just to sort of put it all out there that it could be as much as, as this, rather than, you know, saying, oh, we can do it for 900 and then having to up the price for students. But again, this does, this includes everything besides their food and any incidentals and sightseeing. But hopefully through our fundraising, we'll be able to offset the costs again. And they also do scholarships through this conference. Last year, Community Christmas was very, very generous and sponsored three students for our conferences. So that was really fantastic. So for students that have much more financial need, that's an opportunity, hopefully for them. They've been very, very giving. They've also given them money for food. They have also given them some money for conference attire, which I'm hopeful, I know some of you guys went to the Civics Day, but we're hoping that one of our, one of our plans is to have a clothing closet so that students would be able to get clothing from a closet here that would be able to provide them with dress clothes and things like that for things like Model UN and DUC. So hopefully that will be ready for next year as well, so that they would be able to take part in that. So I'm happy, again, and again, we have 30 students. And it gets to answer your other question about why that, that number. When we've done more than that, we've, I won't say had problems, but it's been more challenging. More, you know, you have 30 kids and 30 kids are super, super dedicated. And when you get to 45 or 50, it's like people's friends who are coming that maybe aren't quite so focused. And it has bred some issues. And so we try to keep our numbers, especially when we're flying or traveling at any great length. It's much easier to travel with 30 than 45. Any other questions on second?
He'll turn on anything?
My thing is, oh, he turned it off. That was, that's great. This is really exciting opportunities for our students to excel at what they love. So I will take a motion on first the trip to Canada and then to California.
I'd like to motion to approve the out-of-country field trip to Montreal, Canada, from November 8th through November 12th, 2023.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. And I also like to make a motion to approve the, it's not out-of-country, out-of-state field trip to Berkeley, California from March 6th, 2024 to March 11th, 2024.
Second. Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Situate High School Principal Search Update. Superintendent Burkett.
Thank you, Shev Brinelli. Good evening, everyone. Next, I'd like to talk about the Situate High School Principal Search Process, contacts, and introduce the community to our new principal. At this time, though, I'd like to invite Dr. Triscoll up to for support. She gets set up. I'll start off. Ms. Triscoll oversaw many of the hiring processes this year. I might have her share of the process and the vetting we go through to reach decisions on who we hire in the district. Before we get to that, I just want to give the community my role in the process. I shared this with the school community executive session on another topic. But one of the reasons I was hired and one of the reasons, I think, to have a superintendent is to advocate and to high-performing teams, to recruit and maintain the best in the business. And I think that's all of our role, especially nowadays where it's quite real that people are mass exiting education in all roles, from bus drivers to custodians to teachers to administrators. The pool and pool for which we're competing for the best, or any, but especially our standards are the best, is becoming very real. And so I say that to commend the community because I met with, one of the best parts of my day when the kids are here is to meet our new teachers. And so today I met a handful of new teachers and they're joining the district. And to hear their comments about this is the place to be and leading other districts to come here in this competitive, very competitive environment was very telling to me. So I don't think we've faced that. I think one area that we have struggled a little bit is bus drivers. So this is no pivoting for anybody that's interested in that to come out there. So as far as the leadership positions, I think in the three years I've been here, pretty much all of central office and principals, except for Mr. Beatty, have been hired by, under my leadership in our team. And I think the proof is in the pudding. I think we've done a good job. There hasn't been a lot of turnover. I think the goal is to have consistency, but also to have input, to recruit, maintain the best in a diverse group of people and mindsets. And we'll continue to get better at that and work on that. But also to build from within. Recent hiring of two department chairs in English and Social Studies from within and Ms. Christine Sheen at the Athlete School as principal. We've got those people too. So it's, the good news is that we're, Tom Situate, the Situate Public School are attracting the best. As far as my role is, anytime there's an opening, you better believe that I'm going out recruiting and calling and beating the bushes. For anybody to know that I think is the best in the business at that particular role, encouraging them to apply. I don't know if everybody does that, but I think they're fools if they don't. And I would encourage everybody out there to do the same. If you're a teacher and there's a teaching opening and you know a great teacher, another district, encourage them to apply. Competition is healthy, it's good, it's necessary. I think balanced with that is having a very inclusive vetting process that folks have to say and what the candidate profile is. And that's something that is unique to Situate. And Ms. Triscoll, one of the brainchild of that, will share what that is, try to match that profile because a lot of it is about fit. And to make sure that we're having a process that's, you know, inclusive and trustworthy, and ultimately, it's the best candidate out there. Okay, so what I'd like to do next is to turn it over to Ms. Triscoll. She's done a great job. And I also want to thank all the folks that spent a lot of time on that, on this particular committee, including Mr. Gates from the school committee. I think all of you have been on one committee or another, and we continue to ask that. But I've also noticed that in Situate, the school committee is much more active than most towns that I've worked, all the towns I've worked in. As far as liaison positions, which we'll get to tonight, but also being part of the hiring committees, which is a lot of time, a lot of your personal time that no one else sees. So I personally want to thank you for that because having your input into those is extremely important. And as well as, I want to thank everybody else in that committee. Large committee, 18 and 20 people in this one, 20 people. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Triscoll to talk about the process.
And I did want to give a shout out to the largest committee we have had so far. I was on the committee, Dr. Dutch, Peter Gates, Daryl David, our Metco Director, Bill Luette, the Assistant Principal, Ryan Beatty, the Middle School Principal, Kate Shula, who's a Department Chair, Scott Payne, the Athletic Director, Kathleen Murray, a Shore representative, Peter Lavins, Shore representative, parent representatives, Phil Blake, a Situate High School teacher, Jackie Frangello, Situate High School teacher, Brian Reed, an SHS Astodian, Henry Galvin, who represented Situate Cats, Jeanie Mullen, the Administrative Assistant. Haley Ferguson, who's a sophomore at Situate High School, Edson Andrade, who was a junior at Situate High School, and Louisa Kinsley, who also hosted our community night. She was on the committee as well. So thank you to all of them. We really appreciate the work you did. And I'm gonna review the process that we took. And this is the process that we have been using now for actually over a year to make sure that we have a consistent and fair process that combs through every possible candidate who we can find. So the first step that we take is we prepare the recruiting materials and we develop a candidate profile. So that means a survey goes out to all of the community, to the parents, in this case, to students, to staff members, and people get to contribute to what they are looking for and what we need for this position beyond the job description. So the job descriptions are pretty much the same. We know what the role is. But the candidate profile is usually, it is something that's much more personalized to what we need. We got awesome participation. So I want to thank everybody who contributed to the candidate profile. Students contributed. You could tell they were, they were great. And we had six key themes that came out through the candidate profile. I'm gonna share a slide that shows those for you. And the candidate profile, I want to say I have about 20 other full statements about having high expectations, both academically and behaviorally, loving kids, working hard to keep open and transparent dialogue, et cetera, et cetera. And that candidate profile is what we use to create the rubric that we use to guide our conversation, here we go, during our interviews. So the common themes were communication, consensus building, respectful problem solving, high expectations, both academically and behaviorally, and loves kids came up, thankfully, so much, over and over and over again, it had to be capitalized, and someone who supports diverse populations and specialized programming, including but not limited to English language learners, special education students. That's my phone. Mine immediately. Sorry. So the, the step after the creation of the candidate profile is an orientation for the committee members. So that means the committee members get together and we talk about confidentiality and the process of looking through all the applications and deciding who gets interviewed and so on and so forth. So the committee saw that we had 12 total candidates. And out of the 12, five candidates had a Massachusetts teacher license, a Massachusetts administrator license, and experience teaching or, and/or being an administrator. So that brought us down to that. Almost immediately, one person out of the five dropped out of the running, accepted another position tomorrow. We then had our interviews. The interviews, the questions for the interviews are guided by this candidate profile. And all of the committee develops those together. And they ask the same questions to all the candidates at the interview. And again, we were down to the, that group of four people on the day of the interview. By the time we got to the interview, we were down to two. Two people accepted other positions before they even came here. So the interview committee took the time with both candidates, really had some heated discussions. And we added a step this time to the high school principal position that we hadn't done previously, which is the community forum. And so that was to give the whole community an opportunity to come and ask the potential candidate questions so the superintendent could decide if this is who we're moving forward with or if we go in an interim or if we repost and, you know, to make that choice. And the community forum was great. We thank every single person who came. And of course, we want to give a special shout out to Louisa, who hosted, who left the beach on a half day from school to come and host us and then went back after. And, and that's, that's it. So after that, it's handed over so that there can be reference checks and the follow-up interview with the superintendent, of course. And that brings us to where we are today. So I know that was very long-winded. I apologize. But if you have any questions about the process, I would, I'd love to answer.
Question? You have to go through a meeting. Do you have a question?
I took the questions. To cross the light.
To cross the line. I just feel like I take a lot of airtime, so I'm trying to give other people space. So first, I just want to say I'm excited, Mr. LaRanger, that you're coming. So I just want to say that it's a little weird to be talking about the process with the person chosen in the room. This is not anything to do with you.
It's the second time he's heard it.
Okay, okay. So I guess the questions, and I know, Phil, we've talked about this, that I keep coming back to is, we are very fortunate to benefit from your expansive professional network. I hear that. And in a lot of cases, your professional network looks a lot like you. And so what I'm just wondering is, what are we doing to make sure that there's a diversity aspect to our hiring and recruiting? Because I just worry that our networks aren't expansive enough to get to the people who we also need to be inviting to Situate. And what are we doing to sort of think about that? And so, and you know, I've pushed you on this before, so this isn't anything different. So.
I can answer that. It's in the strategic plan. It's a high priority. So I think that's an area of growth for me, but also a very obvious high priority of the district.
Can I, can I add something to that? Right now, we had a very small pool. And I don't think it is because anyone is not reaching out to the pool that exists. This is something that all districts are struggling with, not only across the state, but across the country. Administrators are leaving this profession in drills. We want to bring more people in to take the risk and to do the work that's necessary to be leaders in schools. And we, we need more people to accept that common right now. And fourteen candidates is not a lot, but that is not uncommon right now. We need, we need more partnerships with colleges. We need to be, didn't down below its time, before it's time to hire a licensed candidate.
And I think that's what I'm getting at is like, sort of, I hope we as a group can all think together. I mean, so I sit in higher ed and hear all the time, we always have someone on our search committees who is specifically there for diversity, right? And making sure that, I mean, I'm in professional networks where the sole purpose is to make sure that our marginalized faculty are getting the posts from across the country. And so I think there's no reason why we can't be, you know, employing these kinds of strategies to think about how do we get tapped into those other places to share. I get it that it's a shortage. I hear you. And I, there's no blame. I'm not, there's no blame here. It's just a question and I hope that we will think about that in the future.
Carrie, that was one of my questions. But I guess my second one, which is less exciting, is just the, I was curious about the format of the community forum. And who was included in that?
So everyone was invited, staff, parents, literally everyone. We pushed it out through our app. We sent an email to invite people and anyone could add a question. So two things happened. During our interview with the committee, we don't ask follow-up questions. They provide the follow-up questions to the next round. So all of the follow-up questions were asked publicly at that forum by Louisa. Secondly, anybody who was there added questions. Literally, just in the moment, added a question. Sorry about that pressure, but. I mean, those are things you need to be able to do when you're a principal is think on your feet and answer to whatever the concerns are of anyone. And we had time and all the questions were asked.
Just as a quick follow-up, how many people attended this curiosity?
I want to say maybe five additional staff members. We had about two, three parents, not many parents, not many parents, more staff than anything. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any questions?
No, that was part of the process.
Oh, right.
So next I'd like to introduce our new principal, Situate High School. His name is Mark LaRanger. And the background with, with Mark a little bit, and we'll get to know more as we get to know him. He's twenty-nine years of experience, including a teacher, coach, department head, athletic director, assistant principal, and most recently, the college career and technical education director for the Plymouth Public Schools. As the freshman academy assistant principal at Plymouth South High School, Mark and his staff installed various programs to improve the failure rate of freshman students, which I will add in here four more times than likely not to graduate than those that do pass ninth grade. Mark and his staff decreased the failure rates in the freshman academy at Plymouth South High School by two, two, approximately one percent. He was asked to speak at the National Education Conference in Boston, Mass. about the academic success of the freshman academy in 2018. As the CCTE director in Plymouth, Mark and his technical staff oversaw the growth of students competing and winning at the DECA and Skills USA District State and National Level. As the head wrestling coach at Plymouth South High School, he was inducted into the Massachusetts Wrestling Hall of Fame in 2015. And in 2021, Mark received the ultimate honor of being inducted into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame at St. Louis, Oklahoma. Mr. LaRanger looks forward to working with the faculty, students, and community at Situate High School. He believes that creating a positive upbeat culture is a key to student success. When students are motivated, they work harder and learn more. He envisions a building where faculty are excited to be there and students are striving for success academically and socially. Student involvement with extracurricular activities is key to a healthy high school. In his free time, Mr. LaRanger enjoys spending time with his wife of twenty-eight years, Yvonne, who is in attendance. Thank you, Mr. LaRanger. And their three children, Teresa is twenty-seven years old and a teacher and coach for Plymouth Community Intermediate School in Plymouth. Caroline is twenty-five years old and a fourth grade teacher at Orchard Garden School in Boston. And his son Anthony is a junior at Bridgewater State University, majoring in sports management and currently works for Boston Red Sox. Mark and Yvonne have a grandson Luca that is the apple of their eye.
I almost forgot.
You need to meet him. I saw a picture of him. So I will say that I had no Mark for many years. And I think if not ninety-nine point nine percent of that profile are him to a T. That was developed after he applied. So I know we have the right guy. It will take some time for everyone else to know that. I'm very confident in his abilities. People in Plymouth will run, run through walls for him to get a lead, students, staff, community members. Reputation is impeccable. And I'm honored to have him here tonight. And we'll just have him come up and say hi and answer any questions the community may have.
Thank you for that. This is the broken one.
You're all broken. They're all broken.
I'm glad to hold it.
Welcome.
Thank you for that introduction. That was great. That, I mean, I'm thrilled to be here. I really am. I've been in Plymouth my whole life. I left one year to become an athletic director at Wareham and then went back to Plymouth because an assistant principal job had opened up. I would have stayed in Wareham. I loved it. They treated me great, great, great group of educators there. But when the assistant principal job opened up, it was the path I wanted to take. I wanted to be a high school principal. And when this opened up in Situate, I was really excited. My wife and I, she came here for dinner, so that's why she's here. Not, not to support me. So we, we, we frequent here. I mean, we go to dinner here, we eat ice cream here, we bring our kids here, and we've always liked this community. And when this opened up, this, this particular job excited me. And I didn't apply to anything else. I didn't apply to Marshfield or to all the other offices out there. I wanted to be in Situate. And to leave Plymouth, I wanted to go to a community where I really wanted to be, you know. And, and, and as I learned the community and walk around the building and meet people, and everyone's been nothing but nice. It's been terrific. And like what Mr. Burkhead said, as far as, you know, this building and coming to this building, this building's had great leaders prior to me, you know, and it really has. And, and I want to come in and really make sure that staff comes into this building, students come into this building, ready to go, excited. I think motivation is one of my things that I'm pretty good at, you know. I like to recruit people and recruit kids to wrestle and all the stuff that I did. And educationally, it's no different, you know. I want to recruit the best teachers and bring them in and, and have teachers that really love kids. And that love kids in capital letters is me a hundred percent, you know. And that's the kind of staff we want here. We want, because when, when staff is happy and they love kids and they're here, then, then education improves. You know, kids study more, they, they go to class happier, we'll give them a class on time, we'll give them a class more often and, and do the things we need to do to motivate the students to be there. But, you know, staff that comes into this building that's ready to go and happy to be here and is treated fairly and taken well care of, I think will really shine here. You know, and our numbers and our scores, they will go up because we will improve who we hire and bring in. And there's great teachers in this building. As I research this building, there are some fantastic teachers at Situate High School that I cannot wait to work with. You know, the entire staff and everything that, everyone I've met so far has been, nothing but great. So, you know, I was really nervous taking the job, I'll be honest with you. I've been in Plymouth my whole life. But, but the more I come into this, I'm weird. Sometimes I just drive into Situate. The other night I was over here watching a baseball game where I don't know anyone that plays baseball. I just wanted to walk around. I just want to get more accustomed to what I'm going to live, you know, for the next, you know, for the end of my career, because I am going to retire here. So I, you know, the rest of my career, I want to get as used to Situate High School and Situate, the area of Situate that I can, because so far I love it. You know, I'm looking forward to it. And we're going to do some great things, no doubt about it. And thank you for having me. I appreciate you taking the time and that introduction, Mr. Burkhead, was great. And I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Everything you said is true. We have fantastic staff and fantastic kids. We're going to send you free in September.
We got three ninth graders.
Freshmen and seniors.
Great. More coming after that?
Yeah, that's awesome. We'll take good care of them. Definitely will.
You said motivate and I called. Good luck.
Don't run around the building a little bit.
No, it's great. It's a great community and we're really lucky and we're happy to have you with us.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I feel nothing but welcome so far. That really helps, you know. Great place. Good.
See you again. All right, Superintendent Burkhead is going to talk to us a little bit about the Cushing-Hathaway building project. We will be taking a vote.
Yes. Thank you. So we talked about this last meeting of the educational plan. And through the last six months, maybe a year of our work with the working group, the building committee, the community public meetings, the feedback, it's been pretty unanimous on support for a pre-K at this building, which will allow all community members, children that age, the opportunity to use that beautiful building. That coupled with the fact that likely in our time here, there will be a move to universal pre-K potentially. And so another reason for that. So part of MSBA's process is that we do need to vote. There's certain things that the school community needs to vote on. And so the vote tonight, we'd be asking that initially when we put in, applied for a new school, it was K through five. So we'd like, basically what we're asking tonight is that we're changing that to include pre-K through five. And for the community to know if something were to happen and the vote were to be, you know, we're not building a new school, that nothing would change the existing schools. They would be K through five. We didn't build a new school.
Anyone have any questions since we last discussed?
No, I fully support it.
Just to clarify, you said if the vote doesn't pass, everything will stay status quo. But if, and so if we vote for it, MSBA has to approve it?
No, meaning, meaning the new building vote. Let's say we just renovate. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, because it says, should the project not be approved by the MSBA?
So that's not.
Right. Either if the MSBA has to support the new building or this pre-K, and we obviously, if they vote it down, we have no choice.
So the, the MSBA can still theoretically not support it.
Correct.
Then you go to MSBA and seek their approval.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's.
Thank you.
Got it. I know.
So wait, you have to seek their approval to change it?
Yes.
Okay. Like, sort of, they've agreed to the additional hundred students on it.
It shouldn't be a heavy lift, but it is process. It's a process. Because we have, we have been upfront with them about this since the beginning. We were, you know, the big question, so the community knows the answer to this, is that it is reimbursable, because that's huge. To the same rate that the rest of the school would be. So that's important.
Awesome. Okay. Any other questions before we vote? Take a motion on.
I'm not going to make a motion tonight.
Go for it.
I hope to change.
She had a sponsor for free.
I make a motion to change the grade configuration of proposed combined Cushing and Hathaway School from grades kindergarten through grade five to grades pre-kindergarten through grade five. Should the project not be approved by the MSBA, the grade configuration will remain.
So it's like the whole project goes under?
At both schools, would remain at kindergarten through grade five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's exciting. Love that. All right, so let's talk about the calendar. So looking at, and thank you to Campina's Bar, you must gather for us. Our calendar of school committee dates for, no, it wasn't. Looking at our school committee dates for 2023, 24 school year. Anyone have any questions or concerns about the proposed dates?
I would just, I'm just looking at it quickly.
Yeah.
The June seventeenth one. Do we usually have it though, like after the last day of school like we are today, or do we do it?
Last year it was on the last day of school.
I like to keep it that though. Seventeenth is good.
Fine.
I just want to make sure that we didn't try to.
That's such a Peter question.
I just didn't know if we tried to coordinate it.
More importantly, I love your optimism that there'll be no snow party days.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was what it was planned.
Somebody knock on wood. I know, seriously. Yeah, that is a highlight that the fourteenth is the potential last day of school. Janice will be on those dates. Yes. And it's fair enough. You don't want us moving for you now, do you?
No, we can zoom.
I can zoom in. Don't, don't torture us, please. Just enjoy your vacation.
No, it, it looks like, no, I mean, it looks good. I, you know, it's kind of like as a member, you kind of just look at your calendar. Oh, I have a meeting.
Yeah.
It's hard to go.
It's not, it's nice that February only has one. I don't know if we historically had one, and then also April only has one. I don't know if that's been historical.
Yes, because of the vacations.
I don't think I've ever recognized that, but I like the look of it.
I have looked at it because like in April, technically we could have one on the eighth and then the twenty-second or twenty-ninth. Because usually every other week.
Right.
Yeah, technically.
I did check with Kim to make sure that we've done it this way in the last one.
It has been.
Meeting because the vacation is.
I don't think I've ever seen.
There's nothing really happening that week, so having one the week before.
Usually you see it as like a list of dates.
And you can always add meetings. When you were chair, we have them every week.
Yeah, we can always add meetings.
No, I like the look of this.
Peter, stop stirring the pot.
I love meetings. Happy to add one. Okay. We have to vote on this? Yes. Oh, well, the opportunity's coming right up.
We have to vote on this, though.
All right, let's do it.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 school committee meeting dates as presented in this calendar.
Second, all in favor? Liaison assignments. Let's take a little look what we have here. So this printed one is a little tiny bit older. We did do that quick revision for the interim time. But generally speaking, it's pretty accurate. So. Correct. So school councils, we know longer will be liaisons to, or members of. Okay. If, we can either go in order or if there's something that someone is really excited for, please go right ahead and say so.
Are we adding someone to the diversity and inclusion?
So that, that originally was sort of, I want to say, it sort of developed as we brought Jamil on. So it was sort of, it had a purpose until it sort of didn't.
Is he liaison to the?
He is the, yes, yes, thank you. That was more accurately what I needed to say.
So there's someone from the schools representing them?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Well, I mean, a lot of them are, I mean, the four of us are on here, I don't know if Maria wanted to go.
Yeah, I do, yes, I have a mic, thanks.
Yeah.
From my years as an online viewer, I know that when you guys don't use mics, it's very problematic.
Yeah, man, can't hear us.
Um, so yeah, so I'm I'm the one who needs to be added into this mix, so I was eyeing the policy um committee, because I feel like. That is A, an area of strength, and also something that will help me learn the ropes a bit faster. Um, that's one I have my eye on, and I'd be happy to also do S E F, um, and since that one seems like it might be open.
Alright, making notes here.
Okay.
Anybody want planning board?
So, okay, so Maria, we can, we'll just jump to policy, so currently, it's Janice and I on policy.
I took you off of it and left Janice.
Okay, do you want to stay on? Okay, so Maria and Janice for policy, Peter?
Um, that's perfect.
Maria and Janice for policy. I'm fine with that, I'm making the notes, so I'm okay with it.
Alright, so that one's done, um, let's go back up, or you said S E F?
I did say S E F.
Apparently that's me, but it was, I was only on there for a very brief moment.
Okay.
A month, and they had not had meetings, it was.
Yep.
End of the year, so.
Okay.
Go for it.
Great, thank you.
So Maria, Benwick on S E F.
I got it.
Um, okay, so advisory, we'll go jumping up to the top unless anyone else has one that they wanted to.
I don't know as much about these ones, and I'm happy to obviously take one, because I don't want to leave you guys doing all of them. But I I guess I would need to know which ones people don't want to be on.
Sounds good.
I don't have a strong, I I feel like I have to learn, so.
No worries. Um, okay, so Janice, you've been on advisory.
I I grew a bit now, do you want to stay? I think it's either way, I can do it. If nobody else wants it, I'll stay on, if you want it.
I I think this comes up every year, so it's kind of figured out, but these liaison positions. Are we generally required to go to them? I know that the experience has changed from year to year. And I just want to make sure that we all know or determine whether or not we're supposed to go to these, I know that the. As a liaison, you're not technically a member, um, but some of these aren't truly liaisons. As we'll learn, because we actually have votes in some of these, so I think it's just important maybe to understand what our expectations are, I think as a committee, we need to determine that. Um, and and some of these are much heavier lifting than are others. So I don't know, maybe it makes sense, I don't know, to go through and say, you know, Janice, how often do you go to meetings and?
I didn't, I didn't make a lot of them.
I don't go to any planning board meetings, being honest.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know what we're required to, I think technically as a liaison, you're there in case there's an issue that board is looking for something from the school, then you would be that liaison, but. Very rare that that happens really in any of these liaison situations.
Which one would you say are the heavier lifts?
So, uh, Nicole, so the biggest ones are um capital planning. That's probably one of the bigger ones, charter review was big, I'm not sure if Nicole.
That one we don't need.
Yes, that one's done, um.
Master plans.
Master plans.
The collective bargaining will be big, because I believe that contracts will. Not ne- not next year, it'll be another year?
One more year.
Trying to take a break next year.
Okay, so that one, that will be.
Is financial forecast a heavy lift, Peter? I know it's very important, is it a heavy lift?
Is a heavy lift, I mean, I'm looking through the all these now, I think that honestly, I think, I haven't been on all of them, so I think it's important to ask. Everyone here, like what, which ones are heavy, the ones I know, financial forecast is, there's probably six meetings that you go to. Um, and they're kind of in rapid, somewhat rapid succession. Um, it's something that I would like to remain on, we generally had. We added someone last time, just so that they could begin to learn the ropes, but that didn't really go as planned. But it's, yes, it's a, it's a meeting that we have to go to.
Yeah.
You can't not go to it, I think some of the other committees, you don't have to go to.
Well, we have two on finance, so.
Yeah.
Do you want it?
Well, I was, I mean, I'm kind of interested in that, just because Peter keeps saying it's so important, and I would love, I know very little, and I would love to just do some learning.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I'm wondering about is, before we do, if we can wait before we make assignments. Is it worth having a conversation about why we're liaising to these committees? Do we need to be liaising to these committees? And or if we don't, does it make sense just to be known as the point person if something comes up? I just feel like doing this because it's been this, done this way always, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So just, and be really mindful about our times, so, because like, if you said, like, I know financial forecast is critical, mission critical, so like, if I get on that, I'm going to go. But if I'm not told that another one is mission critical, or I'm not always needed, then do we need to be, that's all I'm asking, I'm not trying to get out of work, I'm just legitimately trying to understand our role in liaisoning with these committees.
Agreed, I I think it's interesting um. Historically, I guess it's hard to track back as to, so I can speak to like rec commission. I opt on, I don't know who was the person prior to me, I went as often as I could, but then I also ended up, another thing to keep in mind. Is I was also on capital planning, which happened to be the same night, so that was interesting.
Right, right.
So it would be, maybe we are not, we don't need to vote on this right now, I think it, we could do it next time or something, and.
Yeah.
It would be nice to know when these things meet, because had I known they were voting meetings on Wednesdays, I'd made, chosen one and not another.
Right. Right, well, and I guess, I mean, I guess the other thing I wonder is like, Bill, Bill, from your perspective.
Which is interesting, we would go.
From like strategic central office, like how can we be most helpful, right, because like, what I'm learning from someone who just voted on the select board is that. Some of these issues are gonna end up at multiple committees, and so do we need to go to all of them, or do we need to be on one so that we have a voice, right, like?
I think we need to talk.
Yeah.
And I think it's politically important that we're on and attending as many of these as we can, because.
Yeah.
You never know, I mean, sure, we're gonna miss stuff, we all have children and obligations and jobs and all the thing.
Yeah.
You know, it can also. I mean, in terms of attending some of them, we can also say, oh, I can't make it, does anyone want to go in as like a member of the public and sit in one, if we felt it was critical, that's one of these statements, like, so the next meeting, you couldn't attend. But I would say, I mean. Certainly financial forecast, select board, you know, um, is easy, because it's on, you know, you can always go back and watch it.
Do you go every Tuesday?
I tend to watch it at the boarding, because I can't usually make it.
So, but you don't, you don't, you're not required to go to like.
No.
Because that would be a heavy lift.
Right, but I always go if something like a fill or a bot or.
Yeah.
You know, like the Jenkins School.
Yeah.
Playground one, you know, so if something related to Situate Public Schools is on the agenda, I'm trying my very best to, otherwise, I read agendas.
Yep.
Well, clearly I do that upfront, see if we're on there, then, um, nor they, and I also talk to Andrew Birkert every day, because. We go to baseball seventeen times, we.
That's right, you could talk to Susan, that would be one of the reasons.
Connections in the stuff.
I see Susan, I see Susan every once in a while.
So, yeah, I think your question's valid, um.
Yeah, and maybe it's just, I mean, Maria's being really honest, and I appreciate it, I felt the same way when I came on, I'm like. I'm happy to help, I don't know what I'm helping, because I don't know what these, so maybe part of it is, we need a document that, and maybe it exists, we just need to bring it to the forefront.
Right, right.
What each of these is and what our role is, like to Peter's point, are we voting, are we just talking, are we?
Yeah.
I just, I don't know.
Sure, sure, and I, I guess that information comes from these individual.
Yeah.
Town committees, um, you know, like, so for example, um, capital planning, that one just changed because we made the changes to the charter. So we no longer have a vote, but we have a liaison position on there.
Yeah.
Which is important to just be in the know on.
Nicole, has that changed, been enacted?
I believe it is henceforth, I would think.
Since, it could be like a year, we don't know, we still haven't lost it, but we haven't not lost a vote yet, correct?
I think we did, I think the la- I think that's it, yeah.
I thought we did at the last vote, yeah, I thought we did.
Yeah, what was the one that we, that the superintendent's always been voting on, which should not have been?
Credit.
That one.
Financial forecast.
Financial forecast.
Financial forecast, but the business director gets a vote and the school committee gets a vote, so we still get two votes instead of three.
Correct. That's correct.
And capital planning, it's proposed that we get zero votes.
Correct, but also the town administrator doesn't get a vote, so it's a cancel. Town side loses a vote, school side loses a vote, we cancel each other out, because.
So we get no votes, no, no business director, nor super, nor school committee member.
No, but we are bringing forth our, obviously, um, what, our capital items, because we believe in them, we want them to be voted, so our vote is a little bit. Unnecessary, and same for TA.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm happy to let you do it first.
So, okay, so Janice, you want to stay on advisory?
Yeah, I'll stay on.
Okay, um, I'll stay on select board.
And I was on, so I was vice chair, yeah.
But, so I can.
Okay.
So Peter's gonna take it?
Yeah.
That's just a backup in case Nicole.
Yep. And then we don't have to vote tonight, so we can kind of just, so we can get additional information, and then if we have some changes.
Yeah.
If people want to vote, we can, I just was saying, I was curious, I know.
No, I think we have discussion every year, it's like, we never truly know, but again, some of these, you know, we can speak from experience on which ones we know we get a vote on, and how intensive they are.
I know, you know. Yeah. Um, okay, so financial forecast, then, Peter Gates, Chair Recipacy.
Well, Maria is also interested, so she and I were gonna chat about it, and see how other things fall out.
Okay. Okay. Um, public building, different from, what is that?
School building committee.
Right.
What is Peter?
Public building.
I was just replaced, I was on that recently, I have no idea.
You don't know what this?
Alright, so many different.
I think it's just a, it's not new schools, it's general, the public buildings, that there's something involving the schools, I guess, like a ten, but.
Way to use the name of the committee, because you're.
Who's the, well, I mean. It could be, it could be like you, Nicole, it could be you, right, because one of them, school building committee.
Yeah, so maybe that's just sort of a.
Because it makes more sense.
Well, why is it, why is it under the school subcommittees?
But it's not the school, I don't think it's the schools.
It's not the school. Public buildings as in?
It's non-school related, I think, don't know why we would really need to be.
Anything, I mean, I think it's.
Oh, the public building commission?
I don't know, I've I've never received anything about, but I've only been on it for like whatever, how many, like two months.
Like two months, yeah, okay.
Let's just leave that one, question mark, until we figure out.
Alright, planning board.
I'll stay on, but I don't ever go to meetings, I'm being honest.
Have, are you, my question is, are you on the invite list, do you get invitations?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
They meet a lot.
Yeah.
They do.
Okay, I can talk.
That is true, they do meet a lot.
Oh, right, yeah, public building commission, but I think that's what, what, what it is.
That's a commission.
Yeah.
The public building.
Yeah.
Okay. You want to read it?
Sure.
They are charged with monitoring and facilitating designer selection programming, design bidding, and construction activities associated with the major public building projects authorized by the town, so.
Wouldn't capital planning also look at the buildings, if there was gonna be a calendar?
I think once capital plan approves and the town approves, then it goes to the public building to approve. But I don't, I don't think we're building any new, other than a school, well, potentially a school, public building commission, I don't think that's.
I know they do, they meet frequently.
We have a public school building committee to do that.
Right, correct.
Maybe we don't need to be on that one.
Question mark, well, also though, I mean, does it, you know, theoretically with this. Yeah, I don't know, I'm thinking way down the line, but you know, what happens to the Cushing School, like, is it important, just to have, yeah?
Yep.
I'll, I'll be on that.
Alright, so Janice will they?
Probably be the year forty-four renovation.
Year forty-four or old gates, those are all public buildings.
That's been, that's been ongoing.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fair, alright, Janice, you're on.
Nice.
Capital planning, Colby, Penny and Peter Gates.
Nope.
No one to go?
I'm off.
Same. You're both coming off?
Yep.
Well, someone takes.
It's a heavy lift, it's a very heavy lift.
I'm getting out of it.
Is that just during, um.
So they're meeting more frequently now, but the heavy, heavy lift is during the fall.
If two people are on it, do both people have to go, or can they be alternated?
Oh, that's why there's two, used to only be one, but it was pretty intense, it was a lot.
Because they need weekly, for a little, for a shorter period of time, like in the evening.
Do we have a vote on that?
It was Wednesdays at like seven.
We don't.
So, so we just go to hear what they're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, before the charter review, we did have a vote, before the charter review, but that's been changed, been possibly changed.
Yeah. I will stay if, if, if anyone wants to come on with me as almost like a um.
Yeah, I'll do it, if someone just shadow, I'm like.
Yeah.
If someone would.
Which would you rather do?
Doesn't matter, you take, I was just gonna say, one, one of us should do one, one of us do the other.
I think we can pick one, then look at the schedule.
You know what, I'll, I'll do capital planning, you do financial forecast.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's Maria.
Alright, so Maria's doing financial forecast, and I'm gonna join capital planning. And then you and I just tag team, that's how it works, okay.
Yes.
So recreation commission, you're gonna say?
That one is delightful.
Okay, so we don't have a master plan advisory anymore, I cross that one out, what about charter review, there's nothing with that, okay, so cross that one out.
No, alright.
So Maria's doing S E F.
Yep, if I'm doing financial forecast, should I do finance down here, or is that, does that not matter?
Um.
Peter wouldn't know, because he is.
The, so the, the finance, that's really where like a few of us will just meet about the budget, yeah, I think it goes hand in hand, we could both do both.
Do you want to go on that one?
Yeah, I, I would do that.
That's not a heavy lift, that meets a couple of times.
Alright, so Peter and Maria. Alright, um, I'm on technology, I have no idea, I've never been called to a meeting, so I'll stay on that one.
Well played. I think you will have to call them.
Right?
There's an idea.
Jamil is on D E I, collective bargaining, there isn't anything this year?
Well, you, you need to.
Yeah, yeah, just to get something.
So Peter, do you want to stay on that one?
Yeah, I'll stay.
Since it's chair and vice chair, does that make sense?
Sure.
Policy, we already talked about, sick leave bank.
I don't mind staying on if nobody else.
I would be happy to give it up, but.
Is it, is it a heavy lift?
Uh, no, they just, they generally meet right before school committee meeting, and it's maybe, really ebbs and flows, yeah, it's like half an hour, maybe, maybe like.
Yeah, sometimes it's a lot.
Five times a year, which right before school, they try to schedule before school.
Do you both go, or is that also a tag team?
Um, well, we need two members there, it's not a heavy lift.
No, it's not, it's easy.
I mean, I, I'll do it, I don't know anything about it, but I'll do it with Janice, so Peter can come off, because you've taken on a couple of other things, so.
You can, yeah, that, that would be good.
School building committee, Peter and Janice.
Well, it should be a whole.
Me and, me and Janice.
Okay, so, cool, change that one, the sister city, Peter, you're on that right now.
Sure.
Okay, Peter will stay on that.
That was reassigned to me.
Yep, it will, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And stipend position, that's Nicole and Peter.
I would do that if you did.
That was because it was felt, felt online collective.
Yeah, and, but I don't mind changing it, but that, I don't know that it would, it's meet, is it a meeting, I don't think it's.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Yeah, so it's not a thing?
Okay.
Yeah. It still should be there though, it still should be there, yeah.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, you guys can, we can reassign it.
Well, if it's a demand committee, I would jump on.
You can carry.
It could, it probably, most likely will come into play next negotiation, so it might be near off, I can say.
Okay. So Maria, you want?
Yes.
Oh, and me, okay, sure. Take the good part.
I love that.
Yeah, for sure. Had the, the public's gonna think I'm like such a.
No, you don't.
Alright, so I'm stuck on there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to put, you know, how do we feel at this time?
I'm, I'm okay with voting if people want to, I do think we should put on our to-do list to like. And I'm happy to co-do that with somebody.
Yeah, I'll do that with you.
Okay, just like, kind of.
Even if we had a working job.
Even just a table that was like, here are the positions, here's the description, here's our role, that's it, that would be.
That'd be great.
Better than what we have. Or, or, or a better.
We'll make it even. And then David, yes.
Maria will have this beautiful spreadsheet.
Right.
I like this.
Shouldn't send me to go get stuff. Excellent. That works. Let's do it.
Can you help with people or stuff like that?
Okay, thank you. Awesome. Alright, so we need a motion or something? Yes, motion on our liaison assignments.
Alright, I vote, I make a motion to update the school committee on liaison assignments as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Alright, uh, secretary kind of burkhead with, uh, non-union personnel agreement.
I'd like to, um, ask the, uh, committee to vote on a new three-year contract for Director of Special Education, Dr. Michelle Boebert. My recommendation is to approve the contract, discuss in the executive session.
I can make a motion.
Sorry.
Uh, you have any comments? Any comments?
No.
Uh. Make a motion to approve, um, Dr. Michelle Boebert, Director of Special Education's contract, years twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six as presented and written.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can, can I just say something?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, I'm sorry, we were trying to finish up what we were doing and I just wanna say, on behalf of the committee, Dr. Boebert, we're just so thrilled about this and Bill went through some of the many, many, many accolades and contributions you've made, so I just didn't want, I wanted the public, I wanted to be in the public sphere that you contribute in so many ways that people don't know. And so, and I learned tonight how many more ways you do, so I just wanted to say thank you from all of us, so this is a real great thing for us.
Thank you very much. And a pleasure working here. Looking forward to the next three years.
Past tense over.
It's okay.
It's on the past tense, then you cover it.
I said, I'm looking forward to the next three years, too. Sorry.
Alright, uh. Assistant Superintendent Driscoll with the elementary technology job description. And for you all, I just shared the Google Doc with the liaison position.
And I sent it to you.
You can copy it.
Yeah.
Um, so tonight, um, we are seeking your approval on a job description, um, because we need one formally, um, for elementary technology teacher. Um, right now, the, uh, the position itself used to be aligned with a licensure that doesn't exist anymore. Um, so we wanted to make sure that the qualifications aligned with what exists right now, um, according to the position and job rights with the Department of Ed. Um, so some highlights are, we're looking for someone with an active Massachusetts DESI teacher license, at least two years of instructional experience. Um, the preferred license is mass DESI digital literacy slash computer science PK through six certification, which does exist. Um, Google educator certification is preferred, excellent communication skills with student, staff, fans and community. Um, evidence of experience with project-based learning and problem-based learning. Um, evidence of planning organizational and time management skills and a deep understanding of the Massachusetts digital literacy and computer science standards to develop and implement standards-based curriculum and instruction that promotes problem-solving creativity and collaboration. Um, do you, you have the description in the backup? If you have any questions, I can.
I will try it. Any question?
I do have a question. So, so the, the job description for, is for elementary, elementary technology job description, and you said it's a license of PK to six, or K to six?
There's, there's a, a free K through six digital literacy, computer science certification, and then there's also one for the upper grades? So that's the, it used to be called technology specialist, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
That's all. Okay, so in this, in this, um, is for the elementary schools?
It's just different meaning. Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, just, it just, I know, I know it's about elementary schools, like when you said PK to six, like now you got to screen middle schools, so.
Oh, no, that's just the license.
Just, okay.
Yeah, that's just the license. It is still just the element.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody's going to.
I have a question about that. So this is the, this will be shared across all four elementary schools, like it was before?
Yeah. Yes.
I only ask because I feel like I really wish we had more than one of this position. Um, yeah, having children who have experienced this, it was the highlight of elementary school. And it was such a tiny slipper of their experience and, um, it was just such an awesome, um, program. And it was just, I would love to see one of these honestly, huge elementary school, not one split across the four. I know that's not what we're talking about right now, but I just felt like that was really important to add.
Oh, I think the goal really is for all students to experience digital literacy in all degrees, just like the standards, um, say. So I hope that we can be thoughtful with our scheduling, um, to make sure that we can expand that experience. This is also something that we are rated on, on our school report cards.
Uh huh.
Um, so that's something that we are watching.
Yeah, I think it's important to keep an eye on that for sure.
Just to add some context, we have been speaking and it is on radar, but a potential second position and down the road more, obviously, but, you know, right now we're just waiting on kindergarten enrollment, other things to fall in place, and if there is extra monies, then that is one of the high priorities, so. Thank you for sharing that position and we do value that. Uh, we know how important it is. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the elementary technology job description as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, uh, Dr. Dutch? School bus route bids.
In your packet, in your package. In your packet, you have the invitation for bids. Just to give you some context, uh, I know you're, you're aware that, you know, it's been difficult to hire bus drivers. We have five drivers who've retired this year. We've, we've been able to hire one to replace one of those five. So obviously, that, that creates a, a challenge for us. We approached the, uh, bargaining unit that is the busted van drivers and asked them if they would be okay with us going out to bid for four of our routes for one year only. Uh, and they were amenable to that, recognizing the challenges that we're having. Uh, so we, we are looking to do that so that we can meet our obligation to provide services for students in situ that attend their schools as well as, uh, the students who live in situ who attended, uh, which we are obligated by law to transport them. So this, uh, this will hopefully, if, if we receive bids, uh, that we can afford, we'll, uh, take care of that.
No, I saw it. It's, is, um, is the bidding just for the salaries of the bus drivers or is it for buses as well?
We've, we've bid it two ways. Um, we, we put the bid out as bidding on the routes with drivers and buses and allowed for alternates, which would be just the drivers. So if there's a company that has a surplus of drivers, they're, they can bid it and, and find work for their drivers. Um, certainly the, the buses are not an issue for most of the companies. We, if, if we do not, um, if they use our buses, uh, we'll need to order one other additional bus to replace the one we're turning in that's on a lease right now. But if we, uh, bid these four routes out, obviously we have surplus buses, um, as our extras, which would, would be helpful for sports runs and whatnot.
Yeah. Okay.
I just asked a question. I think, um, I might not know this just because I'm new, but I'm curious, um, is our challenge with getting new bus drivers or getting bus drivers to fill roles something that's unique to Situate or something that's being experienced by the districts?
Uh, it is experienced by districts statewide and nationally. Um, and, and I don't know the reason necessarily. I think it's similar to most, um, service industry positions. It's a challenge to find people.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add, we, this has been like an ongoing, three years. It's always been a problem. Um, so if, we're not gonna stop looking for bus drivers, this is just, you know, like a backup plan. And like Bill said, and, and even, like you said earlier, anybody who knows somebody who wants to come and work for Situate, as a bus driver, please.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we've done a lot of outreach. Uh, folks would drive for us currently. We put signs out, uh, in the community. Um, most, most folks would be somewhat local, situated in Alaska. It was up at the, uh, the transfer station.
Uh, Bob, do we have any impact, uh, or any idea of what the financial impact may be if these do get outsourced roughly?
Um, it, it basically costs us, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in salary for a route, fuel, and then the cost of the lease. We wouldn't lose the cost of the lease in this case, but we would save on salary, um, benefits and fuel. I expect the bids to come in, well, I, I, some, somewhere around sixty-five thousand dollars per route would be a reasonable number, uh, based on mileage, the hours, uh, the cost of, of a bus. So that, you know, as the bids come in, you'll get an idea, um, if it's practical to do it or not. If it's coming in, in a hundred thousand dollars a bus route, um, it's not, it's not financially practical to do. Not that we could or couldn't afford it, it's that it's beyond what this cost should be.
And what's the date that the bids are due?
The bids are, are being opened this Wednesday at ten AM.
And when do they close?
They close Wednesday at ten AM.
Oh, they close, oh, usually they open.
No, no, they close at ten AM and we'll be physically opening the bids at that time.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay.
So if we, we put the bid out for these four, four routes and we get a contract for four routes and you hire, like, say, one bus driver, do we have any, um, financial, like, will we be penalized if we have to go, like, just down to three?
We won't be able to, one, once we sign the contract for those four routes, we would not be able to not have that route for the year. So we'd be obligated for the year for that.
For four routes, so is.
Well, we, we could only award, if, let, let's say that between now and Wednesday, someone walks through the door and says we'd like, they'd like to drive a bus for Situate. We don't have to award all four, we can award only three, two, or one.
But once we award the contracts, we're in it for a year?
Once the contract is signed, awarded and signed, we're in it for the year.
That's not to say we still will be looking for him, cause he always eats up.
I would suggest that you continue to look. It's a, it's an ongoing advertisement on school spring in need, uh, as well as the board at the transfer station.
And just to add to that, our plan would be if we got somebody interesting, bring them into the, you know, operational system doing extra routes for sports, clubs, field trips, you know, get them paid, get them in. And then after a year, you know, we can sign them ahead of time next year. So that's the plan. As you know, if we wait too long, the bus driver, the bids are gone. We gotta have buses, so we gotta have a birdman at the same time, continue to recruit, continue to find people, get their foot in the door, get them trained, you know, we even pay for, you know, license, training.
Training, training.
Training, so we've got some carrots out there to, you know, do that, so, you know, the goal is to, you know, get this done this year, but have a pool of people ready to go for the following year. And maybe at the end of next year, Bob will be available to join.
No comment.
Alright, a motion on.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the school bus route bid as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Bob, this is your last meeting with us, so just while you're still at the table in front of that microphone, wanted to say thank you again. I know we did the recognition
It is.
of all retirees, but we just really appreciate all you've done for the public schools, kids, everything. I just really, um, can't even, yeah, you're, you're one in a million, so we appreciate it.
Blue books.
Well, I, I appreciate that and I'd like to say that I've enjoyed my time. It was originally one year and, um, everybody that, that I've worked with has been fantastic and it was not a heavy lift as far as, uh, wanting to continue on, so I've enjoyed it. And as you know, I've, I've worked elsewhere with a superintendent, worked for a lot of different school committees and, and you guys are fantastic to work for. So thank you very much for making my time pleasant and enjoyable.
Yes, please pull the yacht in Situate Harbor anytime.
I'll let you know when I have one.
Alright, uh, we have a few, uh, minutes to vote here. We have June fifth as well as May fifteenth. Anyone has any comments about those or anything we noticed?
Well, I'll stay because I love it here on the fifteenth.
Perfect.
I make a motion to approve the June fifth, twenty twenty-three and May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So four yes, one abstention. Alright, alright, uh, Lawrence, no? No correspondences, any other business anyone wants to mention before we adjourn future kind of items? There's no meeting.
Thank you. I just want a quick correspondence if I could. I'm not sure if I made it back, I don't know, but, um, I'm gonna read an email or an, an announcement that went out, um, from the, uh, MIAA, Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association. I am writing to, to you on behalf of the MSADA, which, uh, lover acronyms, is the, uh, and that's something Athletic Records Association. Um, District Nine Committee to notify you that Scott Payne is the District Nine nominee for the District Award of Merit. Each of the nine MIAA districts nominate one individual for each award category to be considered at the state level. Scott was selected as the District Award of Merit winner for his outstanding contributions to the field of educational athletics throughout his career. I just wanted to congratulate Scott, on behalf of the Situate Schools and just quietly went under the radar, so just wanted to let people know that got a real good one there and he's being recognized by his colleagues at the state level, so, um, wanted to recognize him tonight, so thank you.
Alright, just for recognizing, I wanted to recognize too, Mr. Adams and Mr. Barnes for hosting yet another, now it's officially annual. There've been two Juneteenth celebrations at Gate Middle School. Dining Commons there is amazingly fun, tons of energy, a good time, but also educational, community building and, um, talented group of everybody, the students, the performers, just fantastic, so we thank you for that. Alright. Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-two?
Second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.